Four, twenty twenty four. And it's five thirty three and Craig Borba.
Present.
Juanita Garner is online and Al Jones.
Present.
David Norgard.
Present.
And Deb Schwartz.
President. Online.
We're gonna handle that in just a second.
Okay, I like them.
Why do we have to have a motion?
This is an emergency.
Yeah, they're both at home to keep us all healthy and.
I think the presence of participation of both Deborah Schwartz and Juanita Garner to our meeting.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Unmute your side.
Okay, a second.
Roll call, please.
Oh, Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Oh, yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Uh, David Norgard?
Yes.
And then Deb Schwartz, I, yeah, okay.
Okay, okay, so great, welcome to the meeting, guys, you're now legal.
Requires a person.
Okay, acceptance of the agenda concerning the removal of the treaty.
Next, your agenda.
Acceptance of the agenda.
Oh, yes, I move acceptance of your agenda. A second? Sorry.
Good. Who first was the, David?
I don't know.
Oh, first.
Okay, David Norgard second to accept the agenda.
Right. Okay, roll call.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz. Deb? Deborah?
Deb, can you hear us?
Now, now I can, it's, is everybody using their microphones because I can't hear that well, but present.
Yeah, our microphones are kind of crappy right now.
Okay, and Deborah, I need a yes from you on that because we're, we doing the agenda?
She said yes.
She said, present.
Oh, Deb, uh, do you accept the agenda?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you, okay, Roman numeral three of a comments. I don't see anybody, do you see anybody coming here soon?
No, I see no one.
Uh, we do have two people online, but one is Bill Wiley and then one is a guest. Is the, if the guest online wants to give public comment, just raise your hand. Who's the, I think they're a student observing.
All right, consent agenda. Have a motion, please.
I still move.
I have a first and a second and discussion on that item. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz.
Deborah, we are accepting the consent agenda. I wonder if it's our sound on Zoom.
You want to hear something?
I can only really hear you, Jeannie.
Uh, we are accepting the consent agenda, so put your mics closer, okay. Deb, do you accept the consent?
Yes, I do, yes.
All right, thank you. Administrative reports, our terms of Palm Springs Library.
My microphone just died.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna try this, um, so the Friends have some upcoming events. Um, they will resume their meetings next week, um, for their board, um, they've been in hiatus for the summer. Um, but their upcoming events are, they will be having a book sale at the J.C. Frye Building on Saturday, September twenty eighth, from ten AM to one PM. Um, they are also presenting Palm Springs Beach, down in Brazil, on Tuesday, October twenty second, at seven PM, at the Richard Center for the Arts, at the Palm Springs High School. Tickets start at thirty-five dollars, PalmSpringsBeach.org. They will also be hosting art, architecture and design book sale on Saturday, October twenty sixth, from ten AM to one PM, in the lobby of the main library, as a part of the October Modernism Weekend. And, uh, they are planning for their holiday bazaar on Saturday, December fourteenth, in the lobby of the main library, from ten AM to one PM, featuring themed gift baskets, gently used books, and specialty merchandise. Thank you.
Great, any questions for Julie? Okay, hearing none, Palm Springs Public Library Foundation, is Bill online?
Yes, Bill's online. We're gonna promote him. Are your microphones dead? They don't die.
Yeah, mine's dead.
They're all like one, one, one nut. Okay, Bill Wiley, give us your presentation, please.
There we are, okay, we have arrived. I gave Peter Pearson the evening off, so I'm here to make the report for the foundation and I want to emphasize mostly the, um, upcoming event, Pride on the Page, uh, coming up on October twentieth. Uh, it's gonna be a great event, but firstly, thank you all again for your generous grant, uh, to help us support our, uh, part-time executive director for the next two years. Um, it's a, it's certainly an enabling grant and helps us, uh, move further and faster, uh, than we could have otherwise, for sure, so thanks again. Um, there is a meet and greet, I hope you've all gotten the invitation to meet up with Peter, um, Thursday of next week, I think it's the twelfth. He's looking forward to it and, um, thank you for those that are gonna be able to attend.
What time is it?
I think, um, I think that's gonna be at, um, five thirty?
On Thursday, the twelfth?
Yep.
Okay.
Right after the foundation board meeting.
Okay, because I have to appear before the, uh, Public Arts Commission to ask for money, so that's also at five thirty.
Well, he'll be at the board meeting, Al. The foundation board meeting, if you're able to attend that, you and Deb.
Foundation board meeting, yes.
Val.
Uh, Bill, this.
I'll turn it on.
Bill, this is Craig, isn't there another meeting the week, next week, too?
There's one on Tuesday.
Yes, yes, um, this, the steering committee for the Capitol Campaign is having a meeting. I know you're invited.
Yes, and I'm planning right now to be there.
Great. That should be, that should be a good one, um, that should be a good one, Craig, so thanks for making time for that one. Um, and Jeannie and everyone else that's gonna, that's gonna be there, that should be a good one, too. So.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On Tuesday, I had it says library foundation reception at four thirty, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes, if you were, there's only certain people who are invited to that because of the, um, the.
It's in my name on there, yeah, okay, I'll be there for that.
These are all free?
Not good ones.
So that, um, so that, uh, is the first two items and then, of course, the, we've spent a lot of time this summer, uh, on the, uh, planning for that Capitol Campaign and for our annual fundraiser, and there'll be more details coming out. Uh, and, um, we're very excited, um, Deb and Al will see tremendous progress that we've made in, in the last sixty days. Um, so it's great, we also have, um, a new, a, a person that is going to be, uh, join the board, our board, and become our secretary and, um, next week, we'll be able, after next week's meeting, we'll be able to announce that person. Um, very talented and, um, uh, we're, we're, she's gonna really help us quite a bit in that particular position, so we keep, we keep, uh, firming up our, um, roster and everybody's working hard and, uh, very, very enthusiastic, uh, for the fall coming up. So, again, I wanted to spend most of the time on Pride on the Page and it's October twentieth, starts at, uh, ten in the morning, goes, um, till five, Julie's been, um, absolutely instrumental in this with, uh, our events chairman, Corey Roskin. And we have a tremendous, um, lineup that's gonna be over at the Cultural Center. Uh, we've got six panels, um, four or five authors on each panel. And, um, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about a number of, uh, different topics, uh, with people who come to those individual sessions. And, um, we've got, um, uh, for instance, we're gonna do something on, um, on film. And, uh, Dave Carger from, um, Turner Classic Movies is gonna be on that, one of those panels. Another panel, um, has, um, our, uh, chairperson for our communications committee, Rebecca Alardi, she's gonna be on that committee. Um, we've got, uh, a number of different, uh, authors from all over the place, um, and, and, and it's just exciting, I wanted to make sure that you knew why we do this, uh, particular event. And there's really two big reasons for that, one is, we're an organization made up of people from, uh, our, our neighborhood here in Palm Springs and in the valley. And we're an organization, not-for-profit, like many of our, um, colleagues and, and sister organizations, and we want to give back to our community, and this is a, one way we can do that, uh, enriching our culture, we feel, with this event, we're not aware of, that maybe there is an event similar to this in the country, but we're not aware of that yet. Uh, and I, we think it's unique and, and it's growing in, in reputation, uh, this is our third year. Second reason we do this is to increase the, uh, awareness of the foundation as a not-for-profit, uh, vital organization in the community, and this helps us spread the word, you're gonna see some really creative, um, visuals and graphics, uh, that are gonna be coming out in our, um, awareness push for this particular event. And, um, we also, three years ago, when not too many people knew that we were around, um, you know, Corey and Julie put a, uh, shovel in the ground and started digging us out, and, um, this is, this is an event associated with, um, our name, so, again, awareness and, um, giving back to the community are the primary, uh, drivers of this. Julie, I don't know, maybe you have something more to say, I, I, we're got, the sort of headliner people for the evening will be announced, um, shortly, I think, that's gonna be kind of a fun, comedic-oriented, lighthearted, uh, discussion that's gonna take place with some folks that have written, uh, uh, television scripts and movie scripts and, and have acted in some of those, and I think it'll be kind of fun for people that are familiar with some of that work. Uh, and that'll, and again, I don't wanna announce it prematurely, I'll let the, I'll let the, the group, uh, take care of that. But again, a lot of tremendous work going on and, um, we're thankful for it, so, uh, just please go to the website. You can, uh, do an internet search on, uh, Pride on the Page, Palm Springs, and that should bring you to, uh, or you can go to the foundation website and, and click in on that, and you'll see what I'm talking about, it's, it's, um, gonna be a super day. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, questions for Bill? Uh, Bill, I, I was on your webpage and it needs to be updated a little bit. Is that gonna be happening soon?
Um, what, uh, anything in particular, Craig, you want us to address?
Uh, yeah.
We know we have, we, yeah, go ahead.
David's letter, um, has the lead for your foundation is, uh, twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Your update on your board members?
Yes, okay, yeah, we're, yeah, we will get to that, um, part of the issue is, uh, the communications committee with, and the website have been working so hard on Pride on the Page that we, we've fallen behind a little bit, so we'll take that under advisement, thanks for pointing that out.
Appreciate it, yeah, I'm looking forward to your letter, Bill.
Which one is that?
You're the new president.
Yes, that's right, that's right, um, we, we have, well, we have one and we submitted it and I think what we wanna do is, is take the one that was in our annual report, uh, to Jeannie, and, um, put that up and, and, uh, so I'll work on that.
All right, thank you, Bill, any other questions for Bill? Brad, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Roman numeral five, CU library staff.
Hello, thank you, um, yes, the foundation did turn in a letter, uh, our, their annual report, which we'll put in the October packet for you, um, so for the library, we are still continuing with our diaper giveaway program, uh, right now, we have sizes from newborn to size five, although we are running low on size five, we're completely out of size six, we have some, uh, bonus items this quarter, which are newborn, uh, A2 formula, plus some other baby care items and toothbrushes, um, laundry detergent, we have some really nice things that are provided at no charge to us, which we give away to the community from, uh, nonprofit from Los Angeles called Baby to Baby. And so there are no paperwork requirements, no library required requirements, families can just come in once a week and ask for items and we will give them, uh, the weekly supply of whatever we have. And, uh, so that's been going great, uh, lots of diapers, lots of diapers, so, um, it's, it's been fun to, to help out the families, summer reading, we had, uh, excellent participation, we had five hundred and twenty-seven people who participated in summer reading, which was a fifteen percent increase over last year, um, the breakdown for the adults, a hundred and sixty-eight adults, seventy seventeen, one hundred and ninety children and ninety-two preschoolers or, um, early readers. And they, uh, checked in one thousand and one times, uh, we count, they get weekly check-ins and, um, then they also track their reading, and so for the pre-K, uh, children, they read, they counted the number of books they read, so they all, as a group, read one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight books, and then the children, teen and adult, uh, tracked their minutes read and they read one hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty minutes, which equals two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine hours, which equals one person continuously reading for ninety-five days. So, uh, non-stop, ninety-five point seven nine straight days of reading at the library. So we had a great time, uh, the Friends of the Library provided some wonderful grand prizes for us, the Sustainability Commission provided eight bikes, one scooter and nine helmets and nine locks and, um, those really, uh, wonderful gifts that they gave us this year. And businesses turned out and donated gift cards and free, free coupons for ice cream and whatever you name it, we had a lot of freebies for the community, thanks to our community business partners, and, uh, we also had some shows and some kid, like I said, some kids read some books, so we had a good time, they also got free books, so, uh, every week that the children, uh, checked in, they got a free book, uh, the adults got a voucher, everybody got a voucher, but, um, the adults got a voucher for the book sale, for the Friends book sale, and then the, the kids, children and teens, all got, uh, new paperback books that we gave them, they got to pick their titles this year. Um, we also, you mentioned, um, Palm Springs Beach, I'm really excited about that, and Pride on the Page, we're very excited about that, and then Julie, do you have any other things, and do you need a microphone?
I do have other things and we'll see how this one lasts.
Yeah.
Okay, so, September is library card sign of the month, so if you don't currently have a library card, please come in and get one this month especially. Um, it gives you resources, glory at home or while you're at the library, so please come and get a free library card. Also, uh, programming for adults resumes this month, book clubs have already started, our virtual offer series continues, we have three opportunities this month to attend. Our genealogy society, um, has, will begin meeting again monthly, starting this Saturday, once a month, and, um, the second Friday film screenings are going to resume on September thirteenth. And also, um, we will have a film viewing on the documentary Judy Blume Forever, discussing, a focus on censorship and, uh, book banning, so that'd be great, and lots of other programs, so please check our website for all of our upcoming programs. Um, the library will also host the Riverside County Health, uh, System, they will be having a vaccine clinic, um, at the library on Thursday, September twelfth, from eleven AM to two PM. No equipments are necessary and vaccines will be available while supplies last, they're, they're bringing numerous, um, vaccines, right now, they are not bringing the flu or COVID, and, but that could change up to the day before, um, they are bringing MPOCs and, um, oh goodness, T-Vac and hepatitis B and some other ones, uh, but I can't remember, I listed them all. Um, and, uh, there's also a flyer and, uh, but like I said, if things change, they have a brain flu and COVID, if it's available, it just wasn't available at the time that we scheduled this, but they said that that could change up to the minute they're coming, so we, whatever they have, they will give out for free, like I said, you don't need an appointment, just come between eleven and two to the library. Um, also, October is gonna bring lots of special film screenings and other events, um, we're gonna be talking with the producer of the film Heaven and Earth, and we're gonna screen that film, we're also gonna talk to a local, uh, poet, who was a Palm Springs High School alumni. Ma Tom is gonna do a presentation and many other things are scheduled, so again, check out our, our schedule online, and then, um, finally, the library will be an early voting site, also a ballot drop-off site, and the general election voting site. A ballot drop-off is going to be starting in early, um, October on the seventh, um, and will continue until, uh, general election voting day. Early voting begins at the library in, uh, October twenty-sixth, and then, of course, the general election voting day is Tuesday, November fifth, so the library will have lots of activities going on. Any questions?
Great, thank you, questions from, questions, I guess, Al?
One question for Jeannie, who on your staff, that is it you who goes out and, um, gets the gifts from various vendors and community businesses?
Well, um, it's a team effort, but I would say that the primary person who does this is our team librarian, Stephanie Lynch, she's been just doing an outstanding job.
Because you really don't have a development officer or anybody's fundraiser, and yet you're able to secure a lot of.
Yeah, we just, we dial for dollars and, uh, we, uh, we are, we're, it's really great to have these community partners, we build relationships with them throughout the year for different things, like Julie might do a, uh, a program, science behind ice cream, and then we have Ben and Jerry's, and they're a partner, and we can just say, hey, can we get some coupons, and then they say, of course, you know, so.
Somebody has to run, do all of that, and that's.
Yeah, it's a lot of network, but, um, yeah, little team.
We write, we write letters, we send emails, we do phone calls.
Yeah, and it's like, who you know, and then you go, yeah, building those relationships with the, with the businesses in town. It's been, it's been a great, we've built that up year over year.
That's great, great, thank you.
You may want to apply to the Regional Access Project. They do funding for community events, and your culminating activity for reading summer, they may be able to cut you some cash, the sponsorships go up to five thousand, but there's a number for one thousand that they would provide. So, uh, you might wanna talk to me later and I can give you a connecting piece on that.
That's nice, you know, um, also, um, with our Friends of the Library, uh, Nancy Morrison works at US Bank, and US Bank gives us a grant each year, so this year we, uh, got ten thousand dollars from them, and that helps us with the summer reading program. So, uh, excellent partnerships.
Kinda like the Friends.
Yes.
Okay, anything else in library staff?
No.
Okay, uh, it's getting in the numeral six, questions report, Al?
Yes, uh, we did not have a meeting in August, if I did this correct. Uh, and so the last balance sheet we had was from July, and then with this one, it, it actually was an increase from one, oh, oh, I just, it's, one, I'm gonna get these right, it was an increase from one point six eight five to one point six nine three. So it was an overall, an increase of eight thousand, I am guessing on this, Jeannie, I have to point to you, because so many of the figures are just, I, I think it's because of the start of the new fiscal year, so it, it's, it's nice that we're kind of there, increased eight thousand dollars, but there's no detail to show you kind of where it actually, I would say, so.
Right, and, um, yeah, like you said, it is the start of the new fiscal year and things are still trying to get flattened out where, where they're supposed to be, um, the numbers.
So we're gonna, what are our two reports, October?
Hopefully, October, November.
With the, with the detail we're used to, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, bottom line, I, I just don't know all of the sub-accounts.
The only new thing really that we got was that three thousand dollar gift that was, uh, quite a, six months back, and then we spent that on the books that you had approved, so then you see that three thousand go out, go out of the account and, um, there might be interest income or things to, to square up as well for the last year, maybe that's what that, maybe that's what it is, because at the beginning of the year, they might have budgeted, they always estimate what the interest is, and then when they close out the year, they might put that back, so that might be what it is, I'd have to investigate further, but it, it does every year, this.
It does.
We're waiting for them to get everything closed out and squared away and restarted.
Cannot be, you didn't, right? Sound bad, right?
So, any questions for Al at this time? Until they're participating.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Okay, uh, thank you all, appreciate it, uh, next is, uh, Roman numeral seven.
Do we need to accept the treasures report?
Uh, yes, if you're okay, and all.
Am I allowed to make a motion to accept the treasures?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I need.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any concerns, questions, hearing none? Uh, roll call, please.
Okay, so we're voting to accept the treasures report, Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Roman numeral seven, discussion, action items, uh, A is change meeting date for October meeting due to, uh, Rosh Hashanah, suggesting Thursday, October fourth, twenty twenty-four to be held at the library.
Right, Rosh Hashanah begins at sundown and I don't, based on the way the sun is right now, we can't make it to be finished by then, so, um, we were suggesting the Thursday after our typical meeting, and then we could do it at the library. Uh, we'll record it.
Because there's a conference here?
Uh, yes, always, yes.
It's not Thursday, October fourth? October fourth is a Friday?
I know. Yeah, that's my fault, October third?
Okay.
How's October third?
No, it's a wonderful day.
All right, so that'll be the next meeting.
Is that, I, I guess you need to, uh, make sure it's okay with everybody and then vote on that.
Okay.
So do you, I guess you ask, do you have any discussion or?
Well, I'm saying, is there any concerns about moving this, uh, meeting to October third?
Yeah. Good.
Okay.
What about?
Those online, is that gonna be okay? Okay, all right, so, um.
Uh, in their heads.
They're okay?
They, they went like.
Yeah, okay, so can I have a motion for this move?
I move that we move the October meeting date to October fourth and.
Third.
At the library, oh, third, to the third.
I said third, yep.
Can I have a second?
I second that.
I have a first and a second. Uh, change the meeting and further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please?
Okay, so we are making a motion to move the meeting date for October to Thursday, October third, at the library, five thirty PM, same time.
Oh, at the library.
At the library, not here, so, Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
All agree, thank you very much.
And Jeannie, thanks for being sensitive to the calendar, to, of course.
Next year, what we're, what we're gonna do, probably November or December, is we will look at the twenty twenty-five calendar and set it, and then we don't have to do this when things come up, we'll just have it, we'll, we'll have that scheduled, we'll adopt a calendar for the next year.
Good.
Okay, uh, Roman numeral seven B, approve library annual report fiscal year. Okay, uh, Roman number seven B, approve library annual report fiscal year.
So you see, you see before you the um draft of our annual report. We like to always include a highlight of statistics from the previous year um. Some information that I did put in my article were some of the highlights of changes. So. Our our foot traffic was seventeen percent increased over the year before. Our um. Physical checkout was six point five percent more and thirteen percent more for downloadables. We should nineteen percent more library cards, nineteen percent more programs were held. And twenty nine percent more people attended those programs. So we like these upward trends. Um, we really took a hit with the pandemic and so now we're, we feel like we're we're coming back slowly but surely and. We are excited about our upcoming renovation, which I can mention in the next thing. But. Um, we always like to include a few stories about different things. We did get a grant from the Emerson Children's Foundation last year for twenty five thousand dollars. For uh our teen steam program. And uh we mentioned our summer reading. And. And then um we did get a five thousand dollar grant for our Parks Passes Backpack Program. So uh. That's a uh a lot of fun. We do have those available. There was some issues, some concern with the California state budget, but they were going to cut the funding for the Parks Pass Program, but they found money for it. And so we still have the Parks Passes and still have our little backpacks that we can check out. Comes with some really cute. Tools, um maps and books and um whistle that you can keep the whistle. And uh some other little little doodads in the in the backpack. So that's a a really good program. So. We are proud to present our annual report.
Thank you. Uh, questions for Jamie at this time?
Uh, yes, Jamie, um, can you remind us? Where does this report go to? Who receives it?
Oh, good point. Um, we, as part of your bylaws, uh, we do present this annual report. Once it's approved. By you, we present it to the city council as a receive and file item for them. So if that happens within the city, we also prepare a full extensive statistical report that goes to the California State Library. And uh all of the public libraries in the state provide that. Lisa and Julian, we, there's again team effort, but. Um, we provide all of our annual statistics to the state. You can view those online at any time. You can go and. Um, just go to Google and search for California State Library Statistics and then you'll find this the port portal. You can, you can select different types of statistics. You can compare us to different jurisdictions. You can download it as Excel and then manipulate the data to see libraries with the same cities, same population, same budget. You know, kind of compare data across the board. It's it's, I love statistics.
Is this item posted in the library once it's approved?
Once it's approved, then we print copies and we do post it uh in the library and we post it on our website.
But any other questions? All right, uh, you had a motion to accept.
Certainly.
At the first?
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion from the annual report? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please.
Okay, to accept the annual report, Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Princess Roman number seven C, discussion, library renovations, updates, opinion.
So um, our library renovation is uh, we are chugging along. And we haven't, what was our last meeting here? July? So um, our library steering committee had their July meeting and um David. You and Craig.
Yeah.
Give updates on that. And then um. We are mostly done with design development and they are working on construction documents right now. And they're about, I wanna say sixty percent done with construction documents. So we're getting close to the the point where our construction documents will go to the permit process. And then our building permit through the city. And we are working on that. And then in the fall, they will go for a plan check. And then probably early January, February, they're going to go out to bid. And then construction will start roughly in May. So in between that time, we will have to move. So uh, we've got a lot of things going on right now. Um, just uh, we've received some really nice renderings of of the the rooms and things. And then um, there was a discussion, we did present to city council and um. And so we gave them an update of the progress. And then uh, we did also have a meeting to discuss. Uh, there was uh some concerns about the parking lot expansion. And so we did have a meeting, a subcommittee meeting on that. And that is still uh up for debate at this time. We have, there hasn't been a hard decision made about our, where we're going on that one, but. We um are reviewing options, I guess. And then if uh subcommittee members want to weigh in on your input, that'd be great.
So a question, you answered one and that was about the the parking. Um, so it's still continuing.
Yes.
The uh, the other question will have to do with the move. Have you been looking at places to move and what's the timeline for moving? When does the moving start?
Um, excellent question. Uh, based on the timeline, if everything stays accurate within the timeline. My personal estimations are that we will be uh seriously winding down our programs in March. And either moving in April or uh moving before April. But we are locating a temporary location and doing tenant improvements, getting all of that ready. So we're gonna start looking for space, I think, the end of this year. We did look earlier in the year and then we realized we were way too early. So.
When you say this year, you're talking about, time, time?
This is November, December.
November, December.
We'll start thinking about.
And what kind of space are you looking for? I mean, how big of space?
It's, it's hard to know. I mean, we could do, we could do various things. We could have. One big space where we put a lot of our stuff in and use it as storage and then have a smaller. Uh, footprint for the physical temporary library. Or we could have offsite storage and have a smaller building. So. We're flexible in what we do, but I, it just depends on what's.
And how, what do you have to take with the time that the library would be closed?
You know, my personal estimation on that also is about two years.
Two years.
For construction. Also, you know, construction has to happen and they're, they've got a timeline on the construction. But then we have to move back in. You know, we have to move in, we have to unpack, we have to put the books back on the shelves. Uh, there's a lot and. Um, that will take time. And so we we, we wanna. Have realistic expectations and not say, you know, let's, let's imagine that construction.
You've done this before too.
Yes.
So you've got some experience, which is a good thing to have.
Uh, um, Palm Desert.
Right.
We did a renovation there and uh. Yeah, very experienced at temporary locations and we moved our temporary location. We had a temporary location and we moved in the middle of it, so. I had two temporary locations.
And the last question, will meet the deadline for spending the money then?
For the grant? Yes, that we uh, we're completely on target to spend the grant funds within the grant deadline. Yes. So uh, everything looks good right now. We're still on target.
Will the fray building be done prior?
No, the fray building is gonna be, uh, it's all gonna be concurrent. So all the electricians will be working at the same time on both buildings and. It's, it's a possibility, but I wouldn't say.
Doesn't give us another option.
I know. I wouldn't say that that's a realistic option, option for temporary location. You know, we do have the Wellwood too. It's another location, but it is so small.
That's very small.
It's the smallest, small, small library. So it's not even a a great option. I mean, so. We're, we'll, we'll keep looking and uh, we've got a really great department in the city that can help us, economic development. They can help us with our, with look, looking for vacant spaces. Yeah.
Did you have any comments?
Uh, not about the, yeah, oh, sorry.
There you go.
Not about the renovation, uh, but about another topic. Uh, we came up at the special meeting of the steering committee, namely parking. I realize as you just said, Jamie, that that is um still, you know, open conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I, I, I want to. I want to amend the conclusion that I came to at that special meeting. Um, I am now actually in favor of. The plan by which we would have more parking rather than less. And I say that. Um, because I realize not only will we be busier. Significantly, I expect in the long run. But there still need to be considered the other occupants of Sunrise Park. Stadium, Mazel Center, et cetera, right? Uh, and so. Oh, if if we were talking about, you know, putting up a ramp and cutting down all the trees, I'd feel differently about it, but. Um, given that we're talking about a, you know, a relatively small percentage of increase or decrease. I favor going with the increase. Um, so I just wanted to say that because I genuinely was conflicted at the end of that steering. Yeah, special steering committee meeting. Um, I I understand the ecological argument. I respect it. Uh, I I I think there are other ways we can address that. For one, with the beautiful landscaping that's already planned. Uh, to me, that sort of counters the argument to a considerable extent. So.
Um, I'm on the same page with David on this. Uh, we have four major use sites park now. I don't see any of them cutting back. I see it increasing. I think parking is a problem there now. Uh, I'm on the board of Mizel. If, and we have a board meeting, I'm at the far end of the parking lot because their parking lot is filled with all the people going there, using their facilities and having lunch there. Boys and Girls Club is impacted. I received a letter from Margaret, who is their a CEO, saying parking is a problem. I received a. Phone call conversation and an email from uh Andrew Stark, who runs the stadium. Saying he's very concerned about it. Uh. And and now I am very concerned about it. I think we need more parking. It needs to be addressed. I would say that ninety percent of the people that use. That area are coming to those four major purposes and they're not going there for any other reason. Uh, so I would like to see maybe of of this group coming from the found, uh, not from foundation, but from the trustees. That we are recommending that the city look at increasing the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it'll make it better for the four organizations. It'll make it safer for our citizens. Uh, heaven forbid somebody had to walk from one of those parking lots to the other today. Uh, it would be really tough. So, um, any comments from those on Zoom?
And you might, uh, we can explain too about what the real discussion is because they, they aren't even. Like the other three trustees aren't even a part of this parking lot discussion. Oh, I guess that is it. But, but to be transparent and public, uh, public organization and a public meeting.
Okay, the architects presented us two proposals regarding the parking space. One was to increase it by.
So um, well, I'll just uh let let me uh, the um. The architects have uh given a proposal which will give us a net increase of thirty two parking spaces. So the the parking lot. Expansion takes away some parking spaces to make room for the driveway and and to cut out from the parking. We configure it. So the net gain is thirty two parking spaces. Um, it was more than that, but our our good uh architectural, our historical architectural consultant. Uh, Katie Bork from ARG Architectural Resources Group has, they've already addressed some of that uh historical elements concern. And had reduced some of the parking already. So I think we lost maybe four spots already. Because it was cutting into the planter beds. And so they said the planter beds are historic, original to the Cody design. We think that should stay. So um, group four said, okay, fine, we'll take, we'll adjust and redo the parking. So they cut some of the parking spaces already. Um. The um discussion that we had was uh because. The community groups said, we think that this um building, the parking. Um, that's being proposed will block the view of the building. So. We called a special meeting of our subcommittee uh community group members to come together to look at it as a group to kind of see. Is that um accurate or or? What are, what are we, what is the complaint and what do, what do we see? So um. There were some, we did some street views and you can actually go, this is interesting. Um, for everybody out there, you can go on um Google Maps and you can do a street view of Sunrise Way. And then you can also select other dates and you can see historical street views of the library in Sunrise Park. Uh, with the one specifically on there that's really impactful is from two thousand seven. And it shows the street is tree lined. There used to be trees in Sunrise Park and they all blew over. So. Um, it historically, the uh, the library has not really been seen from Sunrise Way. It it has been a tree lined street. So uh, it wasn't always um. Out there in the open as much as it is now. But um, so that was the discussion. We did, we had some views, some three D modeling with cars without cars. They kept, you know, toggling in with cars without cars so we could see what it looked like. And so then everybody got to give their, their feedback and their opinions. On this group, we had um twenty, twenty two people on the meeting, I think. Um. And so there was a a mixture of comments and um. And and feedback. One, one comment I wanna add for you two, since you were there and for everybody. Um, there was a concern about uh the green space for parks and recreation, but um. Uh, for flag football and other lawn use. But this area that we're talking about is more um. Sloped and um full of big old trees. So I mean, not, not like, not old growth trees, but. Uh, trees that you wouldn't play flag football in among the trees. So this area that we're talking about isn't, isn't the same. Grassy lawn that Parks and Rec might have been speaking about. So and even our partners, we're gonna come, go out next week and do a walkabout in the, in the grass, just to kind of look at the parking lot and look at the space. But there were concerns of safety, where the Boys and Girls Club, they have issues with parents crossing over to the Ralph's parking lot to pick up their kids in the dark and. So uh, there were pros and cons on both sides, so. I don't know if that's the longest short history ever.
I appreciate those comments covering it. David?
Uh, yeah, just just a couple more notes. Um. In in my recollection of this conversation at the special meeting, there were two arguments presented basically. To decrease the parking. One was the ecological, less asphalt, more green. I get that. Uh, the other, as I recall, and what I perhaps prompted the conversation in the first place was. The view going north on sunrise, uh, that it would be limited by park carts. Um, I did not find that persuasive after we saw the uh. The models that were provided to us by the architects. Um, it seemed. At at best, at most minimal. Um, so I'm not, I'm not really persuaded by that. With all that said. Um, I agree with uh with Craig that we should go on record as uh our, as the board of trustees. Favorite, favoring um the, the plan with the larger number of spaces. I I hope I'm not misrepresenting your.
I just, I just want more parking spaces and 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 maybe there is a third alternative. Where they look at parking more in the southeast area. Uh, closer to the stadium on the other side of the.
I have response to that.
Okay.
It would cost us too much money and it would um, it would cross the sidewalk barricade barricade that we've implied upon ourselves for our area. There's not a lot of room to go southeast. Um, cause the stadium, the parking lot kind of goes up against the stadium's fence and then um.
So if we go further south, we'd have a problem? So if we go further south, we'd have a problem?
Further south, uh, we go a little bit south with this, with this design, but we're not crossing the sidewalk that goes in the park. So there's a, there's a, there's a big meandering sidewalk that runs through Sunrise Park and we're not breaking that barrier of, to switch over into the park. Cause that's, we're counting that as park and we're trying to stay in our, in our parcel. Um, but also we're, we're so far into this project that it would cost so much. We'd have to do change orders, take it to council to even uh, have them draw up new drives, for that sort of.
Cause, is the city looking at Sunrise Park? I thought there was a committee set up to.
Yeah, that's um, the Parks and Recreation Department is working on a, an entire Parks master plan. And they are working on that to do, uh, it's basically a needs assessment of all their parks. And then down the line, Sunrise Park will be uh, master planned and um, looked at on that aspect. So that's another thing. We don't have to do it all with the, with our library renovation. We don't have to address all of the needs of the whole park. Maybe that could be addressed when they do the Sunrise Park master plan. They can look at the other parking spaces and the other areas. It is, it's such a conflict. You don't wanna pave paradise. But the people who need to use the park, need a place to park. So you have to find the balance.
So uh, David, can you formulate a recommendation that you feel comfortable with, that the trustees could say we would support this or recommend it?
Do you um, 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 I don't know if anybody online has anything to add?
I don't think anybody who's online, it's.
Juanita or Deb, do you have anything you wanna take on?
Yeah. So my, my understanding is that the master plan for the parks. It, part of it is to kind of unite um, the different partners in Sunrise Park. And I, I don't know, you know, all the details of it, but I know that, that parking, especially for Boys and Girls Club, was an issue. And it was something that was brought up in the master plan, plan um, for that. So I don't think that we, as of the library renovation, need to worry as much about that as the cities. As the city and Parks and Rec's master plan for that park. Because I know that that was something that was discussed and something that has been on their mind for a while. So um, I mean, they could take care of that. They can make more parking. And we can focus on our renovation. I, I mean, I just don't wanna increase the amount of money. Like, we're gonna be spending money on parking spots and we need to spend it in the library.
Okay, so the proposal by the architects does increase the amount of parking space that we have present.
Yes, by thirty two spaces.
Okay, so we could make a recommendation to support that.
Yes, you could.
So um, I will move here that uh, this board of trustees endorse and recommend. The proposal put forward by our architects of in overall increasing the amount of parking by thirty two spaces.
I would second that. Any further discussion on that item? Is the thirty two spaces the maximum or is that the compromise?
That is the maximum at this time.
Okay. All right, uh, any further discussion? Thank you, Juanita, for that input. Appreciate it. Uh, roll call please.
So the motion is that the board of trustees endorse and recommend the proposal by the architects to increase the uh, parking spaces by thirty two spaces. Or, yes, endorse, yes.
Three surround.
Yeah?
Yes, that's it.
We'll go back and review the votes to get the exact wordings, but.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, now we're ready for roll call. Okay. Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita, oh, Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
David Norberg?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
All right. Thank you and thank you for the input on that one. Uh, let's move to Roman numeral eight, committee reports. I think most of the.
Everything was dead in August. Yes, yeah, so.
Okay.
The thing in August.
Any problem moving on to Roman numeral nine? Okay, trustees, staff, comments, future agenda items?
Um, I have um, for uh, October, we will um, receive and review the foundation's annual report.
Um, I, I would like to see this put on the agenda, um, a dedicated, excuse me, a dedicated item to the transitions for the temporary quarters. And, and related topics, sorry.
Okay.
You want that on the October and November?
Well, it sounds like November, more time we capture.
Probably.
That work?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Any other agenda items? Okay, and all the uh, subcommittees will be meeting during the month of September, so we'll have more reports and hopefully Nancy.
She's been on vacation.
Zoom in on it.
Um, one quick question. Uh, is there a new date set for the next renovation steering committee?
No, though the special meeting had was actually just extra. We hadn't planned on that one. So nothing set for the library steering committee this time.
Okay.
And of the twenty-five calendar, we're gonna do that in November or December?
It's, um, I'm not sure. So um, it depends on is, are, if you're all planning to be around in November or December. I don't, you know, I wanna make sure, like, if people, anybody is gonna be absent in December, I wanna take care of it in November. But I don't know, anybody has any.
Is, is everybody good for November and December meetings coming up?
Yes.
Let's see what those dates are.
Yes.
November sixth.
I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, we wanna see uh, how many of the trustees are available for the next, uh, for the meetings coming up in November and December.
I think you have microphone. It's just, your microphones. Awesome. It's not your fault.
Would that be November sixth and December fourth?
Yes, uh, December fourth and November sixth. We were checking, we're gonna adopt the twenty twenty-five calendar, meeting calendar. But we wanted to make sure that everybody would be around for the November or December meeting.
I will not be here December. I will be here November.
Okay, so we do, we'll do that in November then.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I wanted to be sure, cause you never know. And um, twenty twenty-five calendar.
Any other suggestions?
Uh, Craig, real quick, um, question was asked about the next uh, foundation um, board meeting. And that is gonna be Thursday of next week, the twelfth. And it will be at the library.
Oh, yeah, I, I'll, I'll be there.
He's got it.
Yeah, Al's gonna be there. Deb's, Deb uh, asked for it.
Yeah, what time Bill?
Three P M.
Okay.
Local time.
Then right after is the thing at eight forty-nine, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Got it.
He's gotta eat for me anyway, so.
Okay, Craig.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, during that, I will join the meeting until October's, oh, no, no, no. Yes, 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 uh, over.
Third.
Third, at uh, five thirty. And that meeting will be held at the library.
Elm Springs Public Library, three hundred South Sunrise Way. You can come and look at our parking lot. Although, 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 yeah, the library closes at six, so it won't be super crowded, but.
So I move adjournment.
Okay.
It's six thirty-one P M.
Thanks for everybody tuning in and uh, see you next month.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Bye all.
Bye.